I see that we have a quorum and I will call the city council meeting, city of Hillsborough to order. Uh, tonight before we get started into our into our agenda, I would just uh, like to uh, like to make a few comments about the passing of Larry Payne and and it's with great sadness that uh, Hillsborough lost a strong champion. You know, when Larry came here, uh, it's about fifteen years ago or so. I know he served thirteen years in the in the city administrator role. But what he did was he brought professional city administration to the city of Hillsborough. And he certainly laid a strong foundation for where we are today that we're building on, of course, with Matt, but uh, but Larry, uh, Larry clearly left his, left his marks all over this community. And we're poor for his loss, but we're much richer that he was a member of our community. So uh, I'd like to take a moment and just uh, just bow our heads a moment of silence and remembrance of Larry. I'd also like to uh, just ask that we keep Susan and their family in our prayers and thoughts and uh, any of those that can make it to his services tomorrow. It should be good to have you there. Okay, first item is our consent agenda. We have vouchers totaling four hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars, seventy-seven cents. Uh, no, it was a little bit late, but did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Are there any questions regarding the vouchers? I think there's a pretty good chunk in there for a fire truck. So uh, that's bumping that number up a little bit this time, but we're excited to finally, after two years.
You'd have the opportunity to start making on.
Next item is minutes for our May sixteen, twenty twenty-three meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions, corrections to the minutes? A hearing none and accept a motion to approve our consent agenda as submitted. Councilman Bye moves. Councilman McCarthy seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. We now are into our first public comment opportunity. I don't see any members of the public in the room that aren't here for a specific purpose nor online. So we will move on into uh, item D, which I would like to introduce Colin Hanson, who's the CEO and general manager of KPP Energy. Colin, we're glad you're here and you've brought Brooke Carroll with you and uh, Brooke's in charge of member services. Am I missing anything else? That covers a lot. So by the way, so uh, you know, we'd be, we'd all be pretty lost without Brooke, I think.
Including yours truly.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Exactly, exactly. Well, thanks for being here. Colin's gonna tell us a little bit about uh, what's going on at KPP.
Yeah, thank you for the the invitation to be here again and happy to to get a chance to visit with you. All, first off, do one a second, what what Mayor Thurston said about Larry. I, I got the chance to work with Larry at KMU. He was my president there on my executive committee for a number of years. Those instrumental when we got the training center built and then as well. So known him for better part of two decades and and I know Hillsborough's loss is also a loss for KPP, for KMU and for uh, folks all across the state, so. In terms of a a quick update, I thought maybe what I do is is kind of give you a snapshot of some things that are going on right now in terms of rates and winter storm Yuri, the the three words that I hope by the end of the summer, I don't ever have to speak again and then maybe look forward a little bit, talk about our regeneration and future projects as well. So talking, talking first a little bit about rates. Um, we were very happy in January of this year, we actually uh, introduced a thirteen point one rate decrease. So when a lot of our competitors and colleagues were looking at about that, that equivalent and increase, we actually were able to step away from uh, some resources that were expensive and and deliver a pretty sizable rate increase. And actually, our base rates are as low as they've been, I think, in seven years now. So that was a good good start to the year and it's, it's always nice when you come in as the CEO and general manager to take credit for all the hard work that future, you know, past CEOs and and boards do, but I I will shamefully do just exactly that, so. Winter Storm Yuri, uh, men- mentioned that, that uh, uh, swear word. Um, I think you all know that we, we took a twenty-one point, uh, well, just over twenty-one million dollar hit with Winter Storm Yuri and and uh, all of our members and their citizens have been been uh, face, have had to face the one cent per kilowatt hour surcharge to get that paid off. Uh, as of the end of March, eighteen point nine million is paid off. That's uh, if you're doing the math, eighty-eight point seven percent. We are hoping if if uh, energy sales pick up to to be able to be done with that in July, there's always a possibility that with the mild spring into summer that we've had, that it may get beyond that, but at this point, we're hoping by the August timeframe, we'll be away from that, which would be another set decrease off of customer suspension are are really happy to see. Uh, we've got some summary information there in front of you. So uh, happy to talk about any of the 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 projects that that we've put together over the last couple of years. Looking for the, the biggest project for us right now is the Walnut Energy Center project. We're looking to build a fifty-four megawatt dual fuel, that's natural gas and diesel uh, power plant down in Winfield, Kansas, uh, one of our member cities. Uh, we, we will need the the capacity come twenty twenty-six. We're waiting on the Southwest Power Pool right now to give us the green light to go forward. All the initial hurdles have been cleared, but but we still have one final hurdle with them to clear hopefully in late December, early January of this year, where where we will begin the green light to go forward with that project. In the meantime, we're trying to work on parallel path uh, and and do work with our engineers and with our financial folks to make sure that we're that we're ready when, when and if we get that green light. So uh, in fact, we just had our kickoff meeting with Burns and McDonald yesterday afternoon and had all of their various engineers on the line with us, the structural folks, the electrical folks, the, you know, the air permit folks, the, you know, the, the the geo-technical folks, uh, air permits discharge for miss, you name it. So um, you know, we're getting started on that process and with the hope that about the time we get word from SVP as to go, no-go on it, that we would have not only a scope of work and a conceptual design, but also a uh, a cost estimate that we could take out to the bond markets and and be ready to roll with that. Another thing that we're working on is uh, is is solar. Um, you know, we, I know you've probably uh, heard a little bit about us uh, having an interest in that. Really, the thought process right now is is to do um, some feasibility analyses and to to go back and and make sh- make sure that we're you know, for lack of a better term, shovel-ready, so that if we can identify a grant, if we can identify, you know, a rural utility service loan, if we can uh, identify really any of these federal dollars or state dollars that would be available for solar that we're ready to to jump at that. And I know uh, there's been some preliminary interest from Hillsborough to be included in those feasibility studies. We're excited about that, so. Um, with that, let me, let me pause and just ask if there's any, any questions or any other information I can provide. I, I do want to make sure that that, one of the things that that uh, I want to make sure that we continue to focus on is reliability first. Uh, affordability right there next to it and then and then third, looking at that sustainability base, so. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any like hurdles that you guys face from the state or even federal government right now when it comes to you know, these projects that you're?
Um, I mean, it's gonna be interesting. You, you, there was news out of the EPA about a month ago on 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 our plant emissions. Right now, it's focused on coal-fired and large natural gas combined cycle units, so it wouldn't conceptually
Right.
impact what what we're trying to do. Um, but anytime an administration takes off the gloves and goes after natural gas and and coal, it it does cause us to to pay pay close attention
Right.
to it. But right now, as as our design sits, it shouldn't be impacted by that.
Any other questions for for Colin? I mean, I have to tell you the uh, the foresight of of uh, uh, Barney, you're, you and 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 uh, and my predecessor, you know, in in becoming members of KPP was certainly borne out during winter storm Yuri. And I mean, if we hadn't been members of KPP, we would not be, we would be in a much worse position than we are today trying to uh, trying to figure out how to uh, to pay for power. You know, the one thing that uh, and I've talked to Colin about this and I've mentioned it in 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 a previous council meeting, but I would really like us to think about how we might be able to get back in the generation business in some form or fashion. Because in terms of of our electric utility, we have uh, Brooke and and James have come out and evaluated the the state of our, of our uh, infrastructure here and we're in pretty good shape with our infrastructure, with the, with our lines and poles, et cetera. But uh, you know, if we, we can't impact power coming in. I mean, that's, that's up to Evergy. And if Evergy doesn't deliver the power in, there's nothing much we can do about it unless we have some means or method of generating our own.
I agree.
And uh, you know, being members of a pool where resources are pooled, uh, this joint action agency, for example, the Solomon Energy Center, that is the largest, I believe, still uh, battery storage facility in the state of Kansas, is not?
It it's the largest that's in the SVP market.
Okay. Okay, so, so it was, you know, that was a, that was kind of a leap of faith we took as an organization to uh, invest in new technology, uh, not only for the benefit of all the members, but but Minneapolis really needed it. They were at the end of an Evergy transmission line in the summertime during their peak loads, they would brown out, they would have problems keeping, keeping everything powered up. And so not only were we able to help out a a member and keep them, we're actually able now to sell power from those batteries into the market, which has been a learning process and but a good experience. So
In our full, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and our philosophy has always been at KPP to to own those assets where where we can. Generation in in our current non, non-generating cities and.
So if you look at the uh, membership information that's on the backside of of your page here, what you'll see is uh, the top list are the generating members of KPP. And then beneath that are the non-generating members. And if you look at our uh, population and our peak load, we are the largest non-generating member of KPP. So, you know, I would love to see us figure out some way that maybe a combination of solar, maybe some emergency generation that that uh, we could, we could put in place where we could keep ourselves going should uh, should uh, Evergy fail to 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 deliver, so.
Yeah, especially when we were out of power for but four hours.
Right.
Back in December.
On the coldest day of the year.
And our church flooded.
We had a lot of, lot of facilities flood as a result of that, you know. Our church was completely flooded, uh, the hospital, the emergency room broke, broke, broke a water line, uh, Tabor College flooded a couple dorms, you know, so. That's, that's the difference that that it makes, you know, by not being able to have that have that backup generation, so.
And it was really cold.
Yeah.
And I slept in my overalls.
It's also interesting that uh, that if you look at uh, if you look at the uh, KPP generation sources, you can see that uh, you know, not quite half, but forty-two percent is generated by KPP members. And uh, that number will go up when Walnut comes online. But uh, hopefully we can continue to see that, see that grow, but there's also renewables in there. The GRDA is renewable, um, the wind, the uh, the wind farm is in Greensburg, the Marshall County Wind Farm, Greensburg Wind Farm, both winds. So you see, we have a nice mix of of resources and what we took out that was able to help us, you know, on the rates was the coal, coal-fired Jeffrey power plant. So that contract went out.
At the, that was the hole that we need to fill.
Yes, I, exactly. There's also a lot of other things that that being a member of KPP does and and uh, the member services, which is really Brooke's thing, uh, electric rate studies, capital improvement planning, project management, finance, financial and budgeting assistance, distribution assessment, cybersecurity, grant funding, small-scale solar, all of those things we've uh, we've been at, taken part of of some of that, you know, all of those things. So, you know, those are benefits that we receive as as being part of this group. So again, thank you, Barney, and previous councils and thank you, Dolores, Larry, for getting us involved in KPP.
Actually, I have to say Steve brought that up. Larry finished it all.
Yeah, of course Larry was, had, had, I think had been involved previously, so it was, it wasn't new to him, but.
Uh, I'm glad we did that.
I am too. Thanks.
You know.
Appreciate it. Anything else for uh, for Colin or Brooke?
Thank you again for the chance to be here.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it, yeah. Take care. Okay, we're gonna move into our business item section and first item up is a consideration of ordinance thirteen sixty-nine, adopting changes to zoning regulations for agricultural exemption and fencing. Mr. Styles.
So uh, Planning Commission's been very busy. So that's most of the agenda tonight is Planning Commission related things. Uh, so thirteen sixty-nine uh, addresses a couple of sections of the of the code related to what's called the agricultural exemption. And then we had some issues with fencing. We were seeing quite a few cases come before uh, both the order zoning appeals and the planning commission uh, with relation to fencing. So uh, they've been working on it for five, six months, truthfully, uh, trying to work with the language of what these need to be. Uh, for the agricultural exemption, we, we had a situation come up um, where someone ended up putting, uh, someone who lives on the edge of town ended up putting in um, agricultural, well, it ended up having livestock um, on there and it, the way the previous agricultural exemption was written, uh, they were allowed to do that based on how it kind of worked out. Um, so we wanted to touch that loophole and make sure that that wasn't the case for future people. So uh, the agricultural exemption, as it's written here, kind of closes that loophole. Um, it lets people bring property into the city and continue to have agricultural use uh, up until that is used for a different purpose. So if they wanted to bring it in, say for housing or for commercial development, um, they can continue to farm that or have livestock on it until which point it becomes housing effectively. Um, which makes sense, but it it really, the way it was written previously did not say that. So uh, we kind of corrected that. Uh, the second piece of this is the fencing section. There were two issues with this. Um, when we adopted the International Building Code back in two thousand and eleven, um, it got rid of a section uh, with regard to front yard fencing uh, that we really hadn't been an issue, but then we run into a couple of cases where uh, people would like fencing, which is in, you know, from the front of your house forward. Um, it still has setback requirements in there, but it can, and it can only be forty-eight inches, so four feet tall and seventy-five percent transparent, which is effectively uh, chain link or uh, like a wrought iron fence. Had a couple of cases come before the BZA and and you know, it's just a situation that if the regulations were in place before we had adopted the IBC, then they would have been allowed to do it. But since we actually never got rid of them, one of the unintended consequences, it seems like. The second one deals with um, a little bit more wonky. It deals with uh, corner lot fencing. If you have a corner lot, technically you end up with two front yards. Um, and since there's no fencing allowed in a front yard, uh, we were having some issues with that. Uh, even with existing fencing, there's regulations that say you cannot, cannot replace the fence, you can repair it. Uh, we've had two cases come before the uh, planning commission on that, seeking variances from that, uh. So what this does is allows you to, if you have a corner lot, it allows you to put a fence on that, uh, privacy fence from basically the front of your house to to the rear. It basically gets rid of that being a a front yard and essentially it turns it into a side yard. It doesn't happen very often. It, the, the places where we find it are in the older areas of town uh, where the setbacks are such that it would prevent you from having a fence. Um, it's really a pretty specific piece. Again, it's a little wonky, but we were trying to to correct that issue and put some, some regulations in place that make more common sense than what is actually written in there. So if you have a question about it, I'd be more than happy to. I know Dave and I have kind of tacked a little bit of that today. Trying to figure out what that exactly meant. Yeah. Um, but effectively it allows you to have, have that privacy fence if you have a corner lot, as long as it doesn't go into the front yard.
I wasn't planning on building any.
Well, that's fine. But it also allows you to replace that fence too, which is where we run into some issues. So. Yeah, it's uh,
First, when I read it, I thought it meant we couldn't have a fence on either side.
Right.
And then, and then if that's the case, then you can't have a fence.
If you have a corner lot, you can't.
You can't have a, you have a four, corner lot that everybody can see right into your backyard what you got back there.
No, we're actually trying to make it easier. Trying to have the opposite, but yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, it's, it's a little bit confusing to me.
So it's a little bit weird. Yeah, yeah, we uh, sent this one up and uh, again, the Planning Commission dealt with this for several months, trying to figure out what the best way to deal with this. So uh, this is, this is where we came out. Uh, and they were unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. We did uh, the public hearing process, which is required by state statute. Um, had no, no negative, actually no feedback at the public hearings. Um, so we're confident that they've done their due diligence in this case and we're putting it forward to the city council, recommending that you approve or adopt our ordinance thirteen sixty-nine.
Questions? I mean, I, I, I guess I just want to make it clear to this group that regardless of what's happened up until this time right now, it's, it's our, it's your decision to make ultimately. And uh, if you're, if you're not comfortable making it or you feel like there needs to be additional clarity given to it, then uh, then I, then we're more than welcome to send it back for for uh, for further work.
I, I mean, I really like the concept, but I think the wording is somewhat difficult to understand. I definitely misunderstood.
I did too. I would almost send it back for just for review, just standing.
Yeah, we can tweak it. That's no problem.
I mean, part of it's a definition of what the front yard is on a corner lot.
Right. So, I mean, can uh, would you want them to give you some specific direction or?
Okay, I understand. It's just with regard to the fencing in the corner. Lots of front yard, okay.
Based on, yeah, what your email was, I was confused as well, so.
Okay. Yeah, we can take it back and uh, it sounds like the intention is okay.
Intention is fine.
Okay.
The idea behind it is is great.
So then we don't necessarily need to send it back to the Planning Commission. We need to send it back to Andrew to clear it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's ourselves employed.
Yeah, exactly.
Do we need a motion to uh, for that action?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, would somebody care to make a motion that we, that we send this ordinance back to city administrator and the city attorney to rework some of the verbiage to provide additional clarity?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Councilman Bye moves. Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? On this item, since we're not adopting an ordinance, we do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next up, item is consideration of ordinance thirteen seventy, granting a conditional use permit for six hundred Western Heights. Mr. Styles.
And this is a Planning Commission recommendation. Uh, West, six hundred Western Heights is the grocery store um, uh, out on the highway. Uh, it had previously had a conditional use permit allowing them to operate as a warehouse facility for Barkman Honey. Uh, that expired when they changed ownerships. Um, B and D, B and B Development purchased the building. Uh, it was originally under a lease uh, through the grocery store owner and subleased to them. Uh, grocery store owner had the conditional use, so um, when the B and B Development purchased it, they're the final owner, that's a subsidiary of Barkman Honey. Uh, their original conditional use uh, ceased, ceased to be. Uh, so they had to come back and apply for a new one. And so what they're asking for is uh, basically to allow the same thing that they have been doing in there is warehouse uh, use, which is not um, not allowed in the CS Highway District, which is what all Philbrook Heights is, unless they have a conditional use permit. So um, we did the normal notification, held a public hearing. Uh, we did have a couple of questions about it, but nothing, nothing that was negative uh, with regard to the conditional use. Uh, Planning Commission reviewed it, had no issues, uh, made a recommendate, unanimous recommendation that the uh, city council adopt this conditional use permit as founded ordinance thirteen seventy. So that's what we are moving forward to you today.
How long is that permit good for?
This one does not have an expiration date. Um, it is good until the change ownership or that use ceases to be.
Okay.
Which at this point, I don't think is in the near future anyway.
I just wonder if somebody came along and wanted to use it for retail.
Yeah, if they purchased it uh, for retail use or even if uh, B and B Development decided they wanted to use it for retail use, that underlying use is still allowed. Uh, just the conditional use would go away after it stops being a warehouse.
Any other questions? Hearing none, uh, I'd accept a motion to uh, adopt ordinance thirteen seventy and authorize the mayor to sign.
My good.
Councilman McCarthy moves.
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman Bye.
Yep.
Councilman McCarthy. Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
A ordinance thirteen seventy is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Next item is uh, ordinance thirteen seventy-one, granting a conditional use permit for a bed and breakfast at two oh eight South Washington. Mr. Styles.
Sir, another Planning Commission matter. Uh, we had this and the, the next one are also essentially the same case. Uh, so what happened here is there is at two oh eight South Washington, they have a guest house uh, in the back that family was living in. Um, family is no longer living in that. And so what they would like to do is turn that guest house into a, a, an Airbnb or VRBO, short-term rental. Uh, in order to do that, you had to have conditional use permit. Um, and so just to kind of give you the background of what that is. So bed and breakfast is in a residential area typically. Um, it has less than six living quarter spaces. If you get over six, then it becomes a hotel or motel. Short-term occupancy means twenty-eight consecutive days, so it has to be under that. So we've done, I think since I've been here, we've done three or four of these uh, better Airbnb type applications. Um, so what you would be approving here is sort of allowing of of that property uh, which could include the main house, but in this case is really just subject to the guest house to be used as a, a short-term rental, a bed and breakfast type situation. Um, I don't think that they have any intention of really marketing this one out. Neither one of these really are intending on using, you know, the, the apps of the RBO, Airbnb. Uh, there's been kind of this cottage industry of renting to people from Tabor or people come visiting the community. We want sort of our alternative to to using the hotel or the hotel. Um, so you know, that, that's kind of the situation with this particular, uh, this particular one and the next one as well. Um, so the Planning Commission heard this case. There was nobody there to speak against it. Um, the, the vote was unanimous with one word of caution. Uh, we did have, you know, the Planning Commission has has issued several of these. Uh, and there is a concern that if you were to do this with, uh, continue doing this with the main residence, uh, like some of the ones we've done in the past, that takes that house out of housing stock uh, for a long-term person to to own it potentially. Uh, and you know, with the housing situation that we have, do we really want to be issuing these short-term rental options uh, instead of having somebody living there full-time or renting out full-time? In this case, in the case that that's in uh, thirteen seventy-two, ordinance thirteen seventy-two, it's not what is happening. It's not the main residence, it's a side, you know, like accessory building essentially, so. You know, uh, like accessory building essentially, so.
Not very big either.
No, I don't think you can. No, I don't think that would be. Not particularly, no, but. Uh, there was that one word of caution that we're issuing these permits. We should consider that. Um. Not that they were advocating. Uh, for, you know, prohibition on Airbnbs or anything like that, but to be mindful of that concerning our house. Okay, charged in. Uh, but in this case, in third ordinance thirteen seventy one for two oh eight South Washington, uh, they didn't see really any objections again, because it's not the main residence. So. Uh, the recommendation is to move forward and approve the, the conditional use permit, and that's what we're bringing for you today.
Questions? So is there a motion to uh adopt ordinance thirteen seventy one?
I moved that we adopt ordinance thirteen seventy one.
Hey, is there a second?
Well, second.
By seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none will poll the council. Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty. Councilman by.
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen seventy one is hereby adopted. The mayor will sign. Uh, next ordinance is thirteen seventy two, also granting a conditional use permit for a bed and breakfast. This one is located at three oh four South Main, Mr. Styles.
Same situation, same word of caution. Um, in this case, the building is actually even smaller. It's a. Side accessory structure that you can see from Main Street coming up onto the house. It's sort of sits to the side. Uh, pretty basic. Um, they've actually used it. They've let Tabor students use it on occasion too. They just wanted to come in and make sure that they were in compliance with the rules. So they're, they're kind of checking on that, which is good. It's a good thing. Um, so yeah, this is the same situation. We didn't have anybody. Voice any concern about this. The planning commission voted unanimously to move it forward to you guys. So. We are advocating for approval of adoption of ordinance thirteen seventy two.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to uh adopt ordinance thirteen seventy two. Councilman by moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none will poll the council. Councilman by.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen seventy two is hereby adopted. The mayor will sign. Uh, next item up is consideration of a real estate purchase agreement with East Branch Company LLC for one eleven East First Street, Mr. Styles.
Sir, so this is a one eleven east first is the old post office building is kind of how everybody knows it. Uh, we required that building through the, through the land bank originally. It was donated to us after the business moved out, and the purchaser of the business didn't want to retain the property. Um, so we've had it in our possession since late two thousand and twenty. Since twenty one, we've had it rented to Tabor College, which they essentially use it as a storage unit uh for a lot of. Random things. Uh, and so we've, we've got an agreement with them uh. That is a lease purchase agreement. So there's an option for them to purchase the building. Uh, which this, this agreement that we are considering today, the real estate purchase agreement with uh East Branch. Requires that that agreement with Tabor be dissolved. Uh, we have worked with Tabor uh considering. Moving them over into the old hospital uh and, and leasing them a space there. I got word back from Kathy Castle at Tabor today that they're actually considering not, not needing this space. They, they think they may have found. Space sufficient for what they have. Uh, so that would be a. That would be, that would be kind of the best case scenario is we could, you know, they're, they're more than willing to dissolve the lease. They don't, they don't really need the, the building. They've, they've had it just to. Make it easier on themselves, but um, and they were excited about. The potential for business with East Branch. Um, so the purchase price as listed is, it's an as is purchase for fifteen thousand. Um, it'd be continuing again on, on Tabor's lease purchase being uh vacated. Uh, which we have a verbal commitment from them. We don't have a final yet, so we're working on getting that for the next meeting. Uh. East Branch intends to remodel the building and open an automotive based business, um, have some services and a little bit of retail, it sounds like, so. Um, overall, pretty positive, I think. Uh, pretty positive addition to the community, so. Um. This is, and again, just to kind of clarify, we originally received it in the land bank, but is now um. In the name of the city of Hillsborough, so you don't have to act as the land bank. Uh, we did that under advice of council when we started the lease with Tabor because. You know, it gets a little weird if the land bank is leasing out property, so. We would, i- if they should continue to lease from us, we would still maintain that lease revenue, uh, which is five hundred dollars a month. Uh, at the old hospital, but you know, if they decide not to, that saves them some money and um, we're not really out much anyway, so. Uh, based on that and kind of the conversations we've had with Tabor, we're recommending moving forward with the real estate purchase agreement. Accepting the offer from East Branch fifteen thousand as is, and we'll work to get that finalized with Tabor and then finalize this deal.
They're planning to do some kind of automotive thing.
Yeah, it's an automotive based business. So that'd be some automotive service, um, and some, some retail.
Restoration, right?
Restoration service.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's.
Should be pretty, should be a good.
Just you could, yeah. Sure could.
Any other questions?
Rotary motor.
Yeah, no.
Any, any, uh, any other questions? Hearing none, I'd accept the uh motion to uh. To approve the real estate purchase agreement with East Branch Company LLC for one eleven East First Street contingent on. The dis- dis- dissolution of the lease with Tabor. Or a purchase price of fifteen thousand dollars.
I do have a quick question. You said automotive industry is coming in there is, do I need to? Recuse myself or fuck it?
Do you have a financial interest in this? Business? Okay, then you don't.
I hope, I mean, I hope not.
Okay.
No, you don't know. Your, so.
Okay, so would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll move.
Second, Councilman Lowen moves. Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next item up is Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling one hundred ninety seven dollars seventy four cents. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. That was for the replacement of a battery in two thousand fifteen Ford Porsche Interceptor police car.
Questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the Ford invoice and the amount of one hundred ninety seven seventy four for payment. Councilman McCarty. Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those abstaining.
Abstaining.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, last item is consideration of setting council meetings for Tuesday, June twenty seven. And Tuesday, July eleven. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we've got a little bit of a, a wonkiness in the schedule, which kind of happens every year, but. Uh, we have. We won't have a quorum if we continue to meet on the June twentieth date. We've got too many people out uh that day. And uh, our regular meeting and first meeting in July is on July fourth, and then figure anybody would want to meet on July fourth, so. Uh, what we're proposing to do based on the feedback we have gotten from council members is that. Uh, we can move the June twentieth meeting to the twenty seventh of June, so one week later. And then move the July fourth meeting to July eleventh, again, one week later, our normal meeting.
I will not be in the country of July twenty, starting June twentieth, so.
So do you need a motion to make?
Yeah, we'll have to formally make those changes.
Okay, would somebody care to make that motion that we change the dates? Councilman by moves. Is there a second?
I'm checking my calendar.
Guys, you guys originally told me yes, so.
I know.
And then it's still.
Make sure that.
Okay. This is July when? July eleventh. You know, Brent had no, no, no.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be fine.
My wife's birthday.
So, anybody interested in seconding the motion of Councilman by? Okay, Councilman Cardy steps up to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Boy, I'd hate to have that one die for lack of a second.
Kind of a first for me.
I thought I was gonna have to phone out.
No, no, you're fine.
On the beach and.
Okay.
Make sure. Yeah, I guess we can be there.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Styles, it looks like we're up for your uh city administrator report.
So we've got a, a lot going on the last couple of weeks. Um. So first thing, we had a meeting with KDHE on our, kind of our outstanding items with the consent decree. Uh, we have an upcoming wastewater permit. It's going to renew at the end of the year and. We're under dissent decree uh for the inflow and infiltration, which is the rainwater coming into the sewers. Uh, and then also our ammonia levels. Um, so. With the INI, uh, they were actually really pleased with the progress we've made on that. Uh, they're impressed with the. Our ability to, to rehab the system to the point where we haven't had any overflow events despite having some pretty major rain. Uh, real. Not major, major rain. I guess I shouldn't say that, but we haven't had any overflow events, and so they were, they're pretty happy with that. Uh, the cleaning and the lining projects have made a difference on that manhole rehab. They're really impressed with the Sump Pump Amnesty Program. Uh, and they're actually gonna try to use that in some other communities. They're, they're happy that we were able to kind of tackle that. Even though we haven't officially made any changes as of yet with that, uh, they're, they're pretty happy with that. So. Right now, they feel like there, we've satisfied those initial requirements for INI. Uh, and that shouldn't be an issue with the permitting uh moving forward. Of course, they're gonna watch that and. Uh, they're not gonna force us into a multimillion dollar project with rerouting our, our um. Lift stations, uh, which is kind of the solution that EBA proposed for that. So we're good with that. That's, that was, that was a huge relief for us. Um, and then we also talked about our ammonia levels, which is a thing we've been working on. We, if you remember back in twenty twenty one, we put in those. Aireators and the baffle system in there, and that's made a difference. Uh, we've, we've been able to, to keep our ammonia levels under. Under kind of what they've recommended. Uh, we are planning on moving one of our aerators over into cell three. Uh, which should help with some of the other issues we've got, hopefully eliminate some of that. They also gave us some advice about uh potentially irrigating it. Um, using that for irrigation. And so if you, if you were able to um move some of your, your discharge. From going into the stream uh and move it on to irrigation, which we own quite a property right next to that. Uh, then you can, you, you don't, that doesn't count against your discharge. You can actually go into a non-discharging system if you're able to. To irrigate all of it. I don't know if we're quite there, but.
There's some garage strategy.
Yeah, well, kind, yeah, uh, you know. Um, so we're actually looking into that ARWA, which is Kansas Real Water Association, is gonna help us kind of study that and see if that's an option for us. But they were pretty positive that that could help with some of those ammonia things. Uh, you get into this weird balance between ammonia and suspended solage, which gets. Makes my eyes glaze over a little bit every time Morgan and I start talking about it, but. Um, they were offering advice. They're very encouraging. It felt like it was a really positive meeting. I think we're gonna get. We're gonna get our, our permit with fewer restrictions on it, which is a great thing. That's means less, less dollars out there for everybody else. Uh, all of our rate payers, and I think it's a testament to the improved management of the system. Um. We've, we've changed that up and really stepped our game up from a management perspective on that. We're. Doing much better on the maintenance and cleaning and, and doing those things, so. Uh, give them, give them a gold star. They're sewer guys. They, they deserve a gold star and gout. Uh, they deserve a gold star for that, so. Very positive meeting KDHE. It's always good to keep them happy. Um. Fire truck update. You probably noticed in the appropriations, we paid for half of that fire truck. Uh, so it actually came in after about two years, which is awesome. Uh, it's at Hayes right now. Hayes Fire getting installed. Our, our fire department leadership went out and. Inspected it today, uh, because there was some concerns, uh, that they had some issues with some fuel lines. Uh, while it was sitting, and that's what they were waiting on, some repairs. And so before we gave them the okay to put the box on that chassis, we wanted to make sure that that thing was. Appropriate. Uh, and we're basically the ones to see what we ordered. We hadn't, hadn't seen it in two years. We're not sure if it's exactly what we ordered. Um, and so, you know, we went, they took a look at that, haven't heard back, but I think it went pretty positively based on Ben's comments and texts to me, so. Feel pretty good at that.
Pretty excited when I saw them and I.
Good, good. Um, and that money, of course, for that comes from the fire equipment replacement fund. We have those agreements with our townships in the city of Lehigh. They pay into that too, so. Truthfully, their, their, their contributions are what's sort of paying for this trucks, and so. And it will serve them most, to be honest. It's a brush truck, so.
Yeah.
Um, keeping on the fire lane, we, we had some revisions first draft from the uh architect. Came back and then the fire department leadership reviewed it and sent some more back. Uh, so they're kind of going back and forth right now, and then you two gentlemen, uh, Blake and Barney are, are, will have a meeting again to kind of review that here. Uh, hopefully in June, maybe, maybe a little later. Depends on how long it takes them to get those receipts back. Uh, pool opening, of course, we opened on Memorial Day, had some hiccups. We've had some issues with some equipment. Um. It's been, it's been chaotic a little bit. Um. But I think it's, it's gotten, we're, we're getting it under control. There's always, it's always like this. Every year we seem to forget what it's like when the pool opens, but it's just like. It's kind of controlled chaos. Um, and that's just how it is, uh, with that type of thing. Uh, we've also had some issues with lifeguards, not having enough lifeguards. We've had people out on vacations or camp or whatever. Uh, and then we were also waiting on uh another class. We got our instructor canceled the class, but we were able to reschedule it for this week. And so I've got five people taking that class. We'll be lifeguards by. Next week. Uh, so we're, we're catching up. There's always a little bit of stuff here and there. Uh, I would let everybody know that we've had, we've had a can or a close a couple of times last week uh for lightning. Uh, so. We're, we're stepping our game up with putting that on Facebook and kind of outlining that. I just want everybody to know when we do that, we use an app called Weatherbug. Which is free to download. People can download it. Uh, the rule is if there's lightning detected, um, within ten miles, we shut it down. Until after the lightning is gone and we have to wait thirty minutes, uh, and then we reopen. Uh, we actually will shut it down if we see lightning, if it's visible within twenty miles. That doesn't happen all that much, but. Uh, it's usually that ten mile rule. But if people are interested, if the public is interested in knowing kind of how we do that, they can set up the same alerts we get on Weatherbug and they can kind of see.
Is that the same rule for the splash pad then too? I had somebody ask me about.
Technically, yes, but it's unmanned, and so I, no one's going over there and kicking people off necessarily. You kind of have to use your best judgment. So. Uh, yeah, that was the pool opening. Uh, I got the health insurance savings report there for you. Uh, we'll have an executive session on the next meeting. Uh, we're gonna be shutting down the north block of, north one hundred block of Main Street on Sunday, the eleventh. There's a film crew shooting an independent movie. Up there, so. Might be kind of fun. Might stop by, be a lucky Lou, may end up in the movie. Be kind of fun. Uh, don't anticipate there being too much disruption with that, because we're basically closed on that side of the street on that day time. Uh, I've got a couple of other things that were off my reports. Uh, there's a coma and oral training in Marion. The city of Marion is hosting it. Uh, it's with the Sunshine Coalition. Um. It's not, if the Sunshine Coalition is, is a. Kind of an independent group that monitors and advises on open records and open meetings. Um, you're free to go to that. If anybody's interested, it's gonna be on June nineteenth. Uh, at six, from six thirty to eight thirty in Marion, so. Um, they've extended that off, offered us, and so we'll, I'm extending it to you if you're interested in going. Um, talking about the spray park, we put in, I put in, there's a pretty good article uh in Free Press to sort of answer some of those questions we've had. Anytime you open anything, there's always a hundred questions. Um, and so we've, we've tried to answer those as best we could. Uh, we are tweaking some stuff still. There's still some things coming in. We just wanted to make sure we got it open so people can enjoy it, and people have been. We've been a lot of people enjoying it. Um. You mentioned lightning and the inclement weather that's supposed to technically shut down for that. Will you ask people to wear sandals or, or, you know, aqua socks or? Shoes for, for their safety and for hygiene. I see kids over there all the time not doing that. That's a parent thing. We're just advising you to do that. Um. Yeah, and we're tweaking the hours too, so the hours will change. I think originally we had set it at eleven, from eleven to eight. Now we're gonna go from nine to nine. Nine in the morning to nine PM. Uh, we're still, there's, there's wifi out there, courtesy of TCT, but they're gonna be changing the router out to get better coverage. Got solar shades coming in. We've got more benches, more stuff coming through. Um. Just gonna be kind of a, it's gonna be kind of a, an evolving process. We've got a few things yet to finish, some odds and ends. Uh, and then we're gonna have a dedication on it. I don't know if we, we set that date is, I haven't really set that date yet, but. Um. We're, we're gonna have a dedication, a formal thing, uh, ribbon cutting. So looking forward to it. Everybody's really enjoying the spray party, uh, so hopefully that continues. Uh, a couple of grant things. We got it, well, we didn't get, but um. Eric Duggars, who owns the Old Town Building, got a seventy five thousand dollar grant, a HEAL grant, uh, that he applied for that we sponsored. We had to be a sponsor for it, but. We weren't, we don't have really anything to do with it, but uh, Ranson wrote that for him. Ranson, he hired Ranson independently. They've written our CDBG grant for us. Um, so. So good for them, that's awesome, seventy five thousand dollars from the state to re, help rehab that building, I'm pretty sure it's going to air conditioning, roofing, and some of the other mechanical systems, but. Yeah, should be good, and I don't know his ETA, but I know they're working in there pretty consistently, so. Should be good. Got word this afternoon, our K dot cost share grant, which is the one we applied for five times, four times now. For Adam Street, we did not receive funding for that grant. So I'm thinking we need to pivot how we're doing that, and maybe look at hiring somebody else to do that, normally EBH writes those for us, but we have not been successful. So I think it may be time to, to look at something else on that. Other good news, we got our dividend check from EMC, that's our insurance company, every year we participate with them. They, they like to come in and give us this dividend check, which just really means you overpaid your premium, they had a good year. But it's, we got a twenty four thousand, twenty five, almost twenty five thousand dollar check for that, which is good, that's our, our dividend return, so that's good. And then I wanted to let everybody know that Larry Smith, who owns the, we've sold him the, the property for the storage, can, storage units. Over on Western Heights, he had an option. On the next lot, and he's exercising that option, so we don't need to approve it based on the option agreement, but. Need to let you know that that's happening, it'll be published in the newspaper tomorrow that he's exercising that option, so. I think it's forty five hundred dollar grant, forty five hundred dollars for him to purchase the next lot, he's gonna add another. Storage unit thing there, so wow.
Must be doing well.
Doing well, storage business is doing well. That was everything I had, sir.
Any questions? All right, we're now into our second and final public comment opportunity. I do not see anybody from the public online, nor do I see any members of the public in the room. So we will close that and move on to council comments, councilman by.
Uh, just want to let you know, Spencer from SB Mowing came down and took care of two properties for free. On South Lincoln and North. I believe, one of the properties I think is.
Yeah.
Going to be abandoned, or is, well, it is abandoned, but I think he was in the process of demolishing.
You're in the process of getting close to.
Okay, yeah.
But he did a great job, I can't wait to see video on YouTube when he posts it, so.
What's the turnaround on that usually?
Usually two weeks, three weeks, so. But he said if there's any other properties, just to hit him up and he'll come out and look at them, so. But other than that, that's all I got.
Again, we appreciate you making that connection, but. I think it bears stating that the city is not involved with this.
Oh, this is just, this is me.
I mean, you, no, I understand, but I mean. You know, there's no, the city is, the city is, this, none of this is being done under the auspices of the city. So, just, just for clarity, just for clarity.
Citizen Blake.
Citizen Blake, yeah.
Yep, but that's all I got, just that I'm gonna be out of town next week, so.
Well, have fun, be careful.
Sure.
Councilman McCarty?
Now, I can't see people using splash pad. So that's good.
Yeah. Made me smile to see some of the young, young folks out there enjoying it, so that's what it's all about.
Yeah. Did you get out there yet?
I did, have you not been on the city's Facebook?
No.
Well.
Print up photos.
We have, we have, we have some video.
Okay, okay, I'll have to check it out.
If you want to check that out, but yes, on that Saturday, on that Friday, when it was very cold, that cold front came in.
Oh, that was great.
Temperature dropped twenty degrees.
I was thinking about that.
Yeah. No. It was last, last Friday.
Okay.
But yeah, I got out there and got very wet, very cold, but. That was, that was a drill, I mean, I was, you know, trying to get them to get it done in March, and then they really seen how cold I could get. Recognize everybody, but, I mean, from the, from the, from the ideation of it. With Stacy Selmon and, and, and her committee, and, and Mayor Dolores and, and. City Administrator Payne, they really got the ball rolling and, and, you know. Administrator Matt Styles and his team, led by Dale Dahlke and. Just a cast of characters from, from all of our city departments, got out there and really pitched in. And really created something to be proud of.
It was really cool to watch, at least from my perspective from Ford. The house is going down, the yard, the, the ground being leveled and worked, and now it's a splash pad, it's really cool.
That was ugly before.
Yeah. So again, my thanks to, to all the people that have been involved in this, because it's gonna be an asset for this community for many, many years. And we'll, we'll appreciate it, and we won't always remember all the blood, sweat, and tears that went into it. But now that it's here, but. Again, I just couldn't be more proud of, of our community and, and all those that played a part in making it happen. So. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council?
If you look on YouTube, you can find some great Dale Dahlke, I'll take care of your lawn videos.
Okay.
Okay.
You haven't noticed them, huh?
I haven't seen those, I should definitely go take a look at that. Really? Imagine what that would be like.
It was on reels, I think it was on reels.
Oh, okay.
That's on Facebook, I'll have to go.
There you go, I'll have to go find that.
I have to find that, yeah.
And again, if, if you can, uh, remember Susan Payne and her family during this time.
What time is their funeral tomorrow?
Eleven AM.
Eleven AM. At Park, Park, sorry, Park View, excuse me.
Parkside's a different place.
Park View, yeah, oh, I get it. I mean, I enter, I do that all the time, I apologize.
We had a pastor that did it for a while.
Yeah. So I'm not alone.
Oh, no.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's no other business to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned.